All right, we're getting ready here. I'd like to call and order the November 5th, 2020 business meeting, and ask our outstanding county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Thank you, outstanding chair. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board Christina Twilliger, County Council, Stephen Madcor from Public and Government Affairs, helping with our broadcast, Rich Marvin and Garrett T. With that role call, Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are holding this meeting virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you're in interest of providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it to bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area of which you live. Gary, what's up next?
We will start with a wildfire update. We have Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Chief Commander for our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead, Nancy.
Hey, good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me here today. So I'm going to start with the wildfire recovery update, and I'm going to start with like some large numbers here in Oregon. So for FEMA registrations, there's 24,313 in the state of Oregon. 23,563 of those are considered valid. With the valid registrations breakdown, is 6,621 are owners, 16,921 are renters, and 21 are owner-renter but not specified. Clackamas County is 2,254 of those registrants, and we're still waiting on some data regarding the breakout of how they fall within those guidelines. For individual and household programs here in Clackamas County, and what that means is that they are eligible for things like rent assistance or if they're in hotels, assistance there. There's other things available to them as well as far as recovery and disaster assistance. Again, there's 2,226 valid registrations. 1,800 of those have been repurposed to IHP, the Individuals' Households Program. There's been 610 inspections and 558 of those has been returned, and of those, 138 are eligible. The IHP amount that's being spent here in Clackamas County is just shy of $500,000. Again, we have... Again, we're waiting on a decision from FEMA regarding the local and state request for assistance for personal property debris removal. We call that the PPDR program. We still have not heard from that. We're continuing to work with the state on that and for scenarios, if FEMA does approve, if they don't approve, and what that might mean for here in Clackamas County. We continue to develop an RFP for the five-year on-call contract for debris removal, which we had talked to here with the county commissioners. And again, that is a safety net for us as well as we try to move forward through recovery. We're making another round of calls to attempt to notify more property owners of the No Cost HHW, which is the Household Hazardous Waste Program, and for them to sign the writing entry form. We have approximately 25 additional contacts that we have been able to get from FEMA so that we can fill part of that gap. We want to make sure everyone has the opportunity. If they decide not to have to do that, at least we know that they've had the opportunity to sign the form. We have 67 forms that are complete, and we still have a current count of property damage of 62 residents that are destroyed. 37 of those are stick-built homes, 25 manufactured homes, and there's 214 outbuildings that have been destroyed. Building Coast continues to expedite the permit process in place to help residents who have lost their homes. And we have, the last I heard, which was yesterday, that five have applied for, to rebuild their home for permits, and they have received those permits. And that is my update for today for wildfire. We do have a couple of speakers coming up a little bit later as well.
Hey Nancy, I'd just like to add that yesterday we were on the phone with DEQ, the LAN...
The LCD.
LCD, the Governor's Office, and all kinds of people talking about wildfire recovery. There are lots of challenges, but I want to assure everybody that we are working as fast as, or the county is, the state is, working as fast as we can to move things along. But it's very, very complicated. With asbestos, propane around households, cleaning those up first, that does not clean asbestos flooring, for example. So that, or furnace pipes that may have asbestos. So once they're cleaned by, if you've allowed permission, they clean those up, then they go back, and you still may have hazardous material around the place. So it's very complicated, but please do not dump in our forests. We are working as fast as we possibly can to address cleanup. And of course, we're waiting to figure out how it'll be paid for, and there could be an opportunity for somebody other than you to pay for it beyond, besides your insurance. So please be patient. Thank you.
I have a question. Nancy, thank you for responding to my email yesterday. It was kind of enlightening, and I certainly, you know, we all sympathize with everyone who was a victim who suffered damage or loss of a job or a business or property and was devastated, impacted by the fire. And I just presume that, you know, not having the experience of being in that situation or applying to FEMA, I just thought that at least there would be some assistance that was more permanent or not loan-based. My question is, granted, the email I sent was about a business property that had, was lost in the fire, and you need to explain that. On the private side, for a home, is it, does it, is the FEMA assistance come in the form of loans as well? Or is it some, is there a permanent, not a permanent, but is there something forgivable, if you will, that assistance and aid? Such as even the cleanup, for example. If someone's going to have the cost of a cleanup, and maybe they're going to be incentivized if there's going to be out-of-pocket costs to unfortunately, not legitimately, dump that somewhere where they shouldn't be dumping it?
Yeah, very good question. And again, a lot of this is complicated, which is why we encourage everyone to go to the FEMA website and put in their information to see what they do qualify for. Because if you don't do that, FEMA's not going to say yes or no. But there are a combination of programs for individual assistance. Those that have businesses is a little bit different, and mostly SBA loans is what is available to them. But for individuals, there are some loan programs that might be available to them. And also, individual assistance can be received up to, I think, $34,500, which won't replace your home, but could help with cleanup. So in those numbers that I went through and where they did the inspections and they're going through all of that, that is part of that process to see what exactly they do qualify for. And there are other, like I mentioned, you could get rent assistance. You could get, if you're staying in a hotel. There, but so there is a cadre of things that might be available to you as an individual when you go through that individual assistance process. It's a great question.
Thank you.
Gary?
All right. Next, still on wildfires, we have for your consideration approval of an addendum number three to Board Order Number 2020-66, declaring a state of emergency regarding wildfires. Stephen Madcor, County Council, will present if he's there at his desk. I see his camera is off. All right, so here, we have provided to you, Commissioners, Addendum Number Three. It simply extends the time of the emergency declaration for wildfires until January 8, 2021, which is consistent with your other two existing emergency declarations, one on COVID-19, the second on the debris management related to wildfires. So this simply is a time extension because the current one expires next week. So Stephen, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, thank you, Gary. Commissioners, this is something that we talked about on Tuesday, and it is, as Mr. Schmidt stated, it's an extension of the existing emergency measures. No additional measures are imposed with this. We do have some additional language in there, which came from EOC, which deals with additional funding necessary for debris management, watershed assessment and recovery, and other mitigation efforts for mudslides, landslides, and flooding. It extends it to January 8, 2021, which is aligned with our other emergency declarations, and that way we'll have some consistency with all of them. So other than that, this is just an extension of the previously declared emergency measures. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Move to approve. Y'all have your mics muted.
Second.
Jimmy, you're muted.
Sorry. It's been moved to, we have proven addendum to number three to the Resolution Number 2020-66, declaring a local state of emergency regarding wildfire. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher? Aye. Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Gary, what's up next?
All right, we'll now have an elections update from Clackamas County Clerk Sherri Hall. And I'll just start by saying, Sherri, thank you so much, and congratulations to you and your team. You've done a phenomenal job, especially during a pandemic, to make sure that our votes are counted as quickly and efficiently as possible. So thank you to you and your team, but please go ahead with an update on where things are.
Okay, well, thank you. And at this point, we are at 84.7% turnout, and that is 261,029 ballots. We have about 70,000 as of this morning to continue counting. Yesterday, I think we said 60, but we got a few more in than we expected. And so we are working all day today and all day tomorrow. And the original goal was to be finished counting by the end of the day tomorrow. But if we are not, we will be back in on Saturday to complete it. And everything is just going very well. The crews are, you know, here every day. They're loving what they're doing, and this is very important to get it completed. We also had a really nice surprise yesterday. There was two adults and some children. They had made thank you cards for our temp workers in our office because, of course, democracy is important. And they also did sidewalk art out on our sidewalk around the building with chalk and wrote some really nice things. I can send that to you if I, if I can figure out how to do that. But it's just really nice to be appreciated, and of course, all of our staff really loves that, so really nice.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from anyone?
Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just also thank all the election workers and your staff, Sherri, and actually, you know, frankly, all around the country. It struck me when I found out how many ballots we have to count and knowing that, you know, there's over 3,000 counties in the country, and we're all trying to work under this COVID environment with safe spacing and so on. So it's been, I think, obviously, a lot of people do know why we're slow on having results, but the fact that people are really dedicating their time and working into the wee hours and putting themselves at risk is significant. So I just want to acknowledge everyone and thank everyone for what they're doing.
And it's definitely COVID that has reduced our number of workers from 100% to 40%. So they still are just really happy to be doing the work, even though we're working many more days than usual.
And even though you have a mechanical problem with your envelope splitter, which was taken care of very rapidly by some genius who drove down to Marion County, picked up a part, fixed it that night, and you had to restart in the morning. Thank you for that, too.
Well, thank you, and yeah, that was really nice. The technician made that drive, which is a couple hours round trip, got the motherboard, brought it up, put it in ours, and we're working. And I'm hoping it lasts and continues working hard until we're finished. It would have been terrible to have to open all those ballots by hand. We would have called you all over here, even you, Mr. Humberston. You could have been in a closet away from the other ballots.
You know, I, I don't want to be anywhere near that process other than looking through the windows like any other citizen. We would never want to have...
If it's anybody else whose name is on the ballot.
Yep, you just, you keep your fingers out of that pie, that is for sure.
Right.
I have a question real quick. Do you think it would be appropriate to have some backup equipment for, for some of your machinery there?
Well, that's exactly what I think, too, with the letter opener, because we totally depend on that since we have over 300,000 ballots. My thought was to see about renting one as a backup. This machine was purchased maybe seven years ago at a cost of $10,000 at that time. It's definitely something we don't want to be without, though. We had this happen with one of our Talis machines some years ago, too, but at that time, the vendor was in band. They actually had a few of those Talis machines in their, you know, warehouse, and so they reprogrammed one and drove it over to us, which took about four hours. But we definitely need all of our equipment working. So we might talk to you about that with budget and purchasing another one.
Thank you.
And again, I just can't thank everyone enough for all the support and you as commissioners who have approved everything with purchases and elections. We do have the best of everything except for that machine that broke, but got fixed quickly.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Gary, what's up next?
Next, thank you very much, Sherri. Next is COVID-19 updates. We have Dr. Sarah President, our Clackamas County Health Officer, and Philip Mason-Joyner, our Public Health Director and Coincident Commander of the Emergency Operations Center. Ashley, is Dr. President going to join us or not? I'm sorry about that. I saw her in the list at one point. Is it just you, Philip?
I believe it's just me today.
I'm sorry about that. All right.
No problem.
Go ahead, Philip.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. And as usual, we do have some slides that Christina will put up to share the current metrics for everyone. Perfect, thank you. Pleasure to be here this morning to provide our weekly COVID-19 update for Clackamas County. In general, I would say we are seeing increases in cases, increasing nationally with the country seeing over 100,000 cases of COVID-19 for the first time yesterday with high cases across the state of Oregon and in Clackamas County as well. And even though we are seeing these case increases, I would say that hospitalizations, our test positivity metrics that we're really concerned about and look at closely, those are remaining fairly flat. And that is something that's, that's very good. But, but the increases in the cases certainly, certainly are a concern. We are also meeting with the state of Oregon and advocating for applying some of the lessons learned over the past several months related to the phase reopening metrics that I'm going to discuss a little bit later. And also trying to address some of our concerns around surge and keeping up with case investigation work as this has certainly stretched our, our resources to quickly respond and provide quality services to all the cases and community members impacted by COVID-19 directly. So next slide, Christina, we have the weekly, the weekly metrics. And you can see on the slide that even from last week, a significant increase that we're experiencing. I would say in general in the community that our, our community members are doing quite well when they go out in public wearing masks and follow, or face coverings and following the public health guidance. We are very concerned still about small gatherings of family and friends that when you're in your, your tight-knit group, that you're not necessarily in a bubble, you're in a web. And all the interactions that you have with others and you come and socialize without masks, having to be indoor now, we think that is a significant driver of spread, also impacting when folks need to go to work. That the workplaces and specific sectors of businesses aren't necessarily driving the spread, but it's all these different human interactions that are, are causing this increase that we're experiencing, and we're really not anticipating a change in this direction at this time. Next slide, please. One of the big changes in the past week, which I, I mentioned last week, and it has happened, the Oregon Department of Education and Oregon Health Authority have released updated guidelines for school reopening. These metrics are, from our perspective, a lot more simplified, easier for families to understand for schools, and clarifies our role here at the county in terms of, of the work that we do and decision-making and where, where these are at. So it's really looking at these two metrics, looking over the past two weeks of the case counts for 100,000 people, and then looking at our test positivity rate at the local level. So just in the county. If you hit the next button, it will show you, yes, it worked. Where Clackamas County is at. So we are in the transition phase. I'll show you the exact numbers for Clackamas County on the next slide. But what this means is that schools, if any schools are open for in-person learning, they need to transition back to comprehensive distance learning. And any schools that have been in comprehensive distance learning are going to need to remain there until we look at the new metrics and see if they, they move towards the left, allowing the hybrid model or onsite. The onsite and distance learning is what I call the hybrid model that allows for kindergarten through fifth grade or sixth grade, essentially grade school, grade school to be opened, with the intent that we're recommending most of our local schools do their planning around, starting with case or three, seeing how that goes, and then gradually continue to add the older, older grades. Once we meet, meet the metrics and our, our county is ready to move forward with that. And the next slide will show you exactly where we're at. These numbers were released on Monday. We're at 111.5 cases for 100,000. We anticipate, just the way it's looking right now, that this number will continue to increase before it decreases. Next slide, please. Here are the weekly Phase Two metrics. So I've been preparing you all, the one on the right, the percent of cases within the last seven days that we contact and follow up within 24 hours. Our goal is to do that 95% of the time. This is the first time we haven't met that, and it's actually very, very close to 94%. So kudos to the public health team for continuing to work really, really hard to provide quality service and contact cases and do the disease investigation work and contact tracing efforts. It is a lot right now to keep up with. We have had to ask OHA, we asked the state of Oregon for help, especially over the weekends when we were working through the wildfires and we had staff impacted. And then last weekend was, was the only other time that we've had to ask the state to provide us with surge help to keep up. The state is also running out of surge to be able to help all the counties as everybody's experiencing an increase. So I, we'll have to see what this metric looks like as we move along, and I think that's part of our story, that the resources that it takes to do this work, we're, we're real staff to handle about 30 cases a day. So when we have a day like last Sunday, we already had 92 cases as a county. It just, it's tough work. You have just this big, big queue of folks we got to contact and do this work with, and we get behind. The other, the other data here where we have four out of the six that we are not meeting, I would say that I think the case counts driving this. And test positivity, the hospitalizations, you know, those are things that we're really, really concerned about with response, and these numbers are not of significant concern at this time. But as we head into fall and winter with flu season, we will certainly keep you updated if there is cause for alarm related to those, those metrics. Next slide, Christina. As I mentioned in the beginning, we have been meeting as a tri-county with Washington and Multnomah County Public Health to discuss what have they been learning and what do we want to advocate to the state? Because we do feel that the approach around Phase Two and reopening within the Portland metro area, there needs to be a different conversation with our population density. It's, we are unique when compared to the rest of the state. And ultimately, you know, how do we apply the lessons learned and say, what is the priority? The goal should really be around minimizing hospitalizations and deaths to focus that on those that are at highest risk. And we spoke a little bit last week about, you know, there's the, the impacts from the virus and illness, and we also have to balance that with all the other social and emotional concerns that come with the pandemic, and that that should be the focus. So we are working on a proposal. The highlights are to make revision to these metrics. But they've already moved forward with changing the metrics to schools, and we're very happy that they heard a lot of local impact input and that those changes have been made. We would like to see the Phase Two metrics be revised as a lot of those trend metrics do not tell the full story and do not speak to all the concerns that we really need to be closely monitoring around hospitalizations and deaths. That we spend a lot of time in, in public health, providing consultations to businesses, doing enforcement activities for Phase Two businesses that are, are trying to open. And really, what we found is that we can't pinpoint a specific sector, specific type of business that, you know, cannot, that is at heightened risk, heightened risk related to COVID-19. What it really is about is assuring that businesses that are open can maintain physical distancing, is requiring face covering, has really good plans and sanitation practices in place. And that's what we also would like, that's what we'd really like to see. That we do need to dedicate more resources to help provide technical assistance to businesses that are trying to reopen. And for us, it's really about keeping those gatherings of people small. So in general, Phase One is, or, you know, we would say keep the gathering restrictions at Phase One, which in general is 50 people or less, although that's dependent on the occupancy. But, but I think right now, based on the increases, it's not appropriate to move forward with the larger Phase, Phase Two gathering sizes, which could be in the hundreds for some, some establishments, especially with it being fall and winter and not able to do as much outdoor activities, that I think that this is a really good, happy medium. And really, it's about supporting our businesses to apply what the lessons learned are. And, you know, it puts us in a position where we're often having to say, well, why are bowling alleys now open but not mini golf? And we often, you know, it's a challenge. It's challenging. The state is certainly doing the best that they can to have a thoughtful approach. And, and at this point, this is our, our recommendation on a path forward for the tri-county. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
See, I don't see any. Anybody have any questions? I don't see any, Philip, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, I'm, I'm surprised, but please, because Philip preempted any question you may have. Good job. All right, we're ready to move on then commissioners to presentations. Thank you Nancy and Philip very much. Our first presentation is an update on the Hispanic interagency networking team or INT. We have Maria Maggion, who is with the county's office of equity and inclusion to give you a brief update and presentation. So as soon as she's in the room here, we will do that. And there she is. Hello, good morning Maria, please go ahead.
Thank you. It kicked me out and allowed me back in there briefly, so I couldn't see anything for a while. Thank you, everybody, and good morning. My name is Maria Maggion and I am the Equity and Inclusion Coordinator for the new Office of Equity and Inclusion. And I am so happy to be here this morning presenting on the Hispanic Interagency Networking Team, along with my colleague Diana Camarillo. And she is the Latina Services Coordinator for Clackamas Women's Services. And Christina, if you can pull up the slides and then just to make it easy, just switch off between, between us speaking, that would be great. Is Diana on? I'm not sure I see her.
I, I just brought her over.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So I will start off by saying that the Hispanic Interagency Networking Team is an independent 15-member steering committee. And we have employees from Clackamas County represented on this committee, as well as employees and volunteers from our DHS office, Clackamas Community College, Clackamas Women's Services, Wolfpack Peer Support Services, and wonderful retired volunteers. But hint is much more than a steering committee. It also includes the involvement at over 100 agencies from across the county and educational institutions and other service providers as well. And we, sorry about that, my screen just did something weird. And we were very honored to receive recognition from this year earlier in March before COVID, from Senator Jeff Merkley. And he presented a flag to the Hispanic Interagency Networking Team. This is a US flag that has flown over the US Capitol. And it was presented to Hint for over 30 years of service, building those leaderships within the Latino community and connecting them to service providers in Clackamas County. And strengthening those connections is really super important. Along with the agencies that are part of Hint, we have a email distribution list to disseminate important information out to agency providers to make sure that the Latinx community is getting the important information. Diana?
Can you hear me? I'm, okay. Let's see, okay, so the, the Hint form, Hint formed in 1988 under the name of Migrant and Seasonal Farm Working Task Force. It initially formed to address the shortage of housing in Clackamas County for agriculture workers. The task force never dissolved because the Latinx population in Clackamas County continued to grow. There's an ongoing need for service providers to network and coordinate resources specific to the Latinx community. Hint Steering Committee meets monthly throughout the year to coordinate and host educational forums focused on issues affecting the Latinx community such as immigration, the public charge rule, workers' rights, and other current issues. Hint also hosts hangouts, informal gatherings that provide an opportunity for networking and information sharing among service providers. Among Hint accomplishments include partnerships to survey the need of Latinx community to support for opening, sorry, for the opening of a multi-service center which operated for several years in Cambie. My screen's a little weird here. Yeah. Latinx Resource Fairs, Support the Sisah Chavez Conference, several communities throughout Clackamas County, for example, Cinco de Mayo and Hispanic Heritage Events.
Thank you Diana. So as you all know, the Latinx population in Clackamas County has continued to grow. And Hint is dedicated to working with organizations in Clackamas County to provide culturally appropriate services and also recognize the important contributions that the Latinx community brings to our community. The Hispanic Interagency Networking Team is very honored to have received Senator Merkley's recognition. And we truly appreciate that the support that Clackamas County has provided to us over the years. Everything from use of meeting space to co-sponsoring cultural events. And we are really looking forward to your continued partnership in this endeavor and making sure that we stay connected to the Latinx community and that we're getting really important information out to the community as well as receiving information from them as well. We have a listening session scheduled all in Spanish on November 16th, where the Board of County Commissioners will be hosting this. And we will have interpreters for a community that does not speak Spanish. And so we're hoping that this is one of many opportunities to continue to host the Latinx community. So we can also get important information from them that we need to better inform our services that we are providing. So with that, Hint is very honored to present the flag for display to the Office of County Administration in the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And so we are providing that flag over to county administration. And it is an honor for us and a sign of our very appreciation to Clackamas County for their continued support in the past and for years to come in the future as well. Thank you very much. And we can go ahead and open it up in case anybody has questions about anything.
Martha?
I really want to thank you for all the work that you do because I remember when the agency, when, when the group formed in 1988, because I was running Three Rivers Farm at the time and dealing with the housing emergency back then, with not enough housing for, for workers, no childcare. I, I have a story where I actually kind of did my own childcare for, for the kids. Because I didn't want those little guys to be down in the fields with them. A lot of it was women working and they, they, I just didn't feel it was appropriate for them. So I kind of set up toys and daycare and snacks and I remember in the farmhouse. And a number of years later, I had a young man knock at my door. I think I've told this story before, who told me that he remembered playing with Play-Doh at the table because his mother was working in the fields. And basically, he said that he went on to go to OSU, he was a teacher. But he remembered and had really fond memories of the fact that it was a fun place to go. But back in that time when it was formed, it was, when Hint was formed, it was a real necessity for those of us that were dealing directly with employers, being an employer with employees that we really needed to help in the community. The local Catholic Church, St. Patrick's would help out quite a bit. But I'm glad that this has grown to be institutionalized across the entire county. So thank you for that and I'm so glad you're there and hope you continue the work. Because we still have a shortage of farmworker housing and just housing in general in our agricultural areas of this county.
Thank you Martha. Paul?
Yeah, a, a, a great, a great day here. I just want to just say hello to Maria. And just, she has been there for, I don't know how long you've been at this Maria, but for the county.
Twenty-five years.
Every table, how many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah. So all I, I can just say that I always enjoyed visiting you at the tables at some of these events or booths. You're, 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 you're always there, your great smile and your, your willingness to help. And the staff, all, everyone involved is just in great advocacy and helping bridge those gaps between the Latino community and, and, and the rest of the community. So I just want to just acknowledge your, your hard work and dedication and all the great work and the, the supporting staff as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maria, I really truly appreciate the work that your organization has done. I wanted to share something with you. My wife's father, my father-in-law was the last foreman of the Kearney Mesa Ranch on the north rim of Mission Valley in Southern California. And about three years after we were married, when he finally decided I was an acceptable son-in-law, I'm sure you can imagine what I went through, proving myself. He gave me a gift. This was made by a vaquero on the ranch back in the early 1950s. It's a 40-foot hand-woven rawhide lariat.
Oh, wow. That is impressive.
And every aspect of it, even including the slipknot, is all hand-woven rawhide. And it is functional. I have used it and actually was successful in roping a cow on behalf of a neighbor one time a number of years ago. But most of the time it just hangs in my office. So I just wanted to share that with you. I was very honored to receive this, of course, very honored to receive his daughter as my wife also.
That's sweet. Thank you so much for sharing. And it, you are correct, the best fond memories I have of my grandfather on the little downtime that he had, he was hand-weaving ropes and stuff like that. So that, yes, thank you.
Welcome. And again, thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Got no other questions or comments, Gary?
All right, thank you very much. The next presentation commissioners is about wildfire updates from two of our community partners. The local American Red Cross and the Environmental Protection Agency. We have Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management, who will facilitate this conversation. So Nancy, if you could introduce our guests and go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. So I think hopefully we have everyone coming over. So we do have a couple of presenters today. First, we have Dale Coontz, who is the Chief Operations Officer for the Red Cross Cascades Region. And he's going to give an update on some of the things that they have been doing at the Red Cross, as well as looking at some of the recovery efforts that we have going. We also have Anthony Barber here from the EPA. And I'm actually happy to say that Anthony actually lives here in Clackamas County. So he is very invested in what he's doing. He's the Director of the Oregon Operations Office in Portland, a former EPA federal on-scene coordinator as among other roles. And he's been with the EPA for 24 years. And he is the Executive Lead on Forestry and Long-Term Disaster Recovery. So we'll start with Mr. Coontz first and then we'll have Mr. Barber.
Thanks Nancy, I appreciate it. Yeah, so I wanted to introduce myself. So I am actually the Chief Executive Officer for the region, which covers, for the Red Cross, which covers all of Oregon. And then my joke about our poor friends across the river in Washington, who wish they were part of Portland, but want to live on the other side of the river. And I want to start by saying a big thank you. You know, in the early days of, early days of the wildfires on September 7th, September 8th, September 9th, I spent the majority of my time in Clackamas County at the, at the various places that we were standing up for sheltering. And I could not be more proud of, and you should be very proud of the local Red Cross volunteers who helped stand up those, those evacuation points and that became shelters. And then I also want to say a special thank you to our friends at the Clackamas Community College, who were amazing as we stood up the, the shelter there, who were fantastic partners. And that extends to, to Nancy and her team at the Emergency Management. And then also to the Sheriff's Office and anybody else that was sort of really contributing in those early days. Especially as the evacuation orders went from level one to level two to level three for a lot of people. We were sort of really, I'll be very honest, it was really stretching our resources to the, to the nth degree as the Red Cross. So, you know, you should be proud of, and I'm sure you are proud of, of the work that your citizens and your staff have done there at the county. It's been really, really amazing and Clackamas has been great partners throughout the whole process. I did want to update just a little bit of sort of about where we are as far as the continuum of disaster. And as Nancy said, just maybe focus a little bit on the transition here into recovery. So just a couple statistics from us as the Red Cross, you know, we, we sheltered. We have provided over 100,000 sheltering nights across the state. And that is all the way from Lincoln in those fires, all the way south to Medford, Ashland, around the cities of Phoenix and Talent, all the way east to Klamath. It's over 100,000 nights of, of sheltering that we've provided in partnership with the counties and in partnership with the state. At this time, there is no Clackamas County evacuees in our care at the Red, at the Red Cross. And we've closed all of the, what we call non-congregate hotels, non-congregate sheltering in Clackamas County. As of, I believe, early this week, maybe last week. And so those folks who have, who were staying with us, the majority of those folks in Clackamas were actually not from Clackamas. They were coming from other parts of South. So Clackamas again was, was being very kind and hosting folks in the county there. And as we transition into the next phase of the disaster, we're coming out of the emergency phase, things are, things are mellowing out. We still have about 900 people in our care across the state as the Red Cross within our sheltering footprint. Majority of that again is down south, down in, down in Jackson County. But we will, we will continue to provide shelter where needed. And as, and as, again, those, those 62 major damaged or destroyed homes, those folks are eligible for Red Cross, what we call, to confuse things, we call it IA as well, but it's not, it's not individual assistance. We call it immediate assistance, just to make things confusing with our FEMA friends. But we did, we have provided a small amount of, of cash on a debit card, PayPal, directly into somebody's bank account to help those families make maybe another choice, maybe pay a bill, do something else that they're able to sort of help with their own road to recovery. And as part of that road to recovery, the Red Cross in partnership with the counties and in partnership with the state Emergency Management Team and our friends at Yes of Six, so that's Ed Flick and his team. We are standing up something called the Multi-Agency Shelter Transition Mast. And this is really focused on folks who are unable to return home because they have a major damage or destroyed home and then helping to, helping them find sheltering options for them. That may include individual housing assistance from FEMA. It may include community partnerships. It may include sort of any number of, of sort of options that exist. And that's being stood up across the whole state and what I think launches later this week or early next week, depending on the county. And, and that process is, is, is really set to sort of take and jump off to really support those families. You know, these are ones that maybe have insurance or underinsured or really filling in those gaps to help, help them as best possible. The last thing I want to leave you with is that, you know, the Red Cross is 90% volunteer. Nine out of 10 people that you see as a Red Crosser who are showing up to those hotels, those shelters at one o'clock in the morning are volunteers in Clackamas County. You should be proud of your, your local volunteers in Clackamas County, who both assisted in the early days in Clackamas. And then as we sort of retreated up to Multnomah County with our sheltering, that Clackamas County volunteers have continued to, to show up and, and they've been deployed to every part of the state to help other counties and help other, other Oregonians. So again, you should be really proud of the work. From my perspective of being in disasters during my, during my career, really proud of the work that Clackamas County has done and really proud of the work that your, that your citizens have put in. And with that, I'll, I'll pause and see if there's any questions for me. Or I'm happy to, to wait until after Anthony Barber's able to go.
I don't see any questions, but of course, we're very proud of the volunteers in Clackamas County and what they did to assist those in, in very difficult times with the fires in Clackamas County. So thank you very much for being here today.
Thanks, Chairman.
Anthony?
Thanks, Chair Bernard. And thanks for allowing us to be on this morning. My name's Anthony Barber. Been in the Oregon Operations Office here, running the, the office for the last dozen years or so. And Commissioner Humberson, Commissioner Schrader, I, I've played with you. I've been privileged to work with you on a few Veterans Affairs issues over the years. And Commissioner Humberson, Commissioner Schrader, I've been acquainted with you. I've been privileged to work with you on a few Veterans Affairs issues over the years. And I just appreciate your service there. I just wanted to say. And I think I even got to walk in a parade with you, Commissioner Schrader, not too long ago. So, that was fun. And, you know, we, we are local, most many of us here to the Portland area that are working on the response. I'm going to introduce Randy Natus in a minute. He's, he's really the powerhouse behind our work here. But I just wanted to say, you know, as a Clackamas County resident and one who did pack up my things and did get prepared to evacuate, I appreciate the clarity of communication and the, the safety with which you protected the citizens of Clackamas County. I want to say, I'm, I'm taking a little break from my, my role as liaison officer for incident response. And Nancy, I will provide Winona Wilson's contact information as our liaison officer until the twenty-first, at which time I'll come back on board. And then I guess, you know, Randy is here. He's our Incident Commander. He's one of our great federal on-scene coordinators who does disaster response for a living and has for a long time. I've worked with Randy on and off for over twenty years and really respect his professionalism and ability to get, get things done for people. So, I'm going to turn the rest of our talk over to him.
Yeah. Thanks, Anthony. Or I know you as Tony. So, thanks, Tony, and good morning, everybody. And thanks for having me here, commissioners and everyone else. This has been very important work for EPA. So, again, my name is Randy Natus, and I'm a federal on-scene coordinator for the U.S. EPA. And I'm currently serving as the Incident Commander for EPA's wildfire recovery efforts. As Incident Commander, I'm leading the mitigation and removal of household hazardous waste for the affected areas by the September deadly fires. As mentioned, in my day job, I am still an emergency responder, supporting EPA's key mission of protecting human health and the environment. And I lead large-scale disaster recovery efforts. I do time-critical removal actions, cleaning up contaminated lands, and working with state and local agencies on planning and preparedness activities, building a capacity and doing a lot of training exercises. And I also, I live in the metro Portland area. I live in Portland. And I work with Tony out of the Oregon Operations Office. So, roughly four weeks ago, EPA engaged with this response activity, and we started down south. Jackson County was the first to give us a large quantity of rights of entry. The rights of entry process is really what's driving our ability to do our work. We take property rights very seriously, and we will not enter anyone's property without a signed completed form of that rights of entry. And that's collected by the counties, and that's delivered to the state and then over to the federal government, EPA. To date, we've, we've already received almost twenty-one hundred rights of entry throughout the eight affected counties that we're working in. And we've, to date, almost cleaned up sixteen hundred of those properties. So, we're, we are making some really good progress in the four weeks that we've been engaged. And the anticipation is that we should be done in around three more weeks. And that all depends on the rights of entry that we receive. Hopefully, all of them have been submitted. If not, I will always encourage everyone to get those in as soon as possible. If you'd at least like the Phase One removal of the HHW, the household hazardous waste, to be removed from your property. And there's a process that we go through. It's really a three-step process. Once we have a large quantity of those rights of entries or what we think is the full complement from the county. The first thing we do is we deploy our Community Involvement Coordinator. In this case, in Clackamas County, we've already done that. That Community Involvement Coordinator meets with local officials, residents, and they make available fact sheets or other informational products that are required to send the information or pass along the information of our process. Next, which we're doing this weekend in Clackamas County, we deploy reconnaissance teams. Those teams include an arborist. And that arborist would, goes through these properties that we have signed ROEs for, determines if there's any impacted trees or trees that are hazardous to our workers for their health and safety, and they mark those trees. They also verify that the data we have on the right of entry is appropriate and matches to the property that we're working on. So, we want to make sure that we're working on the correct property. And once we have that reconnaissance mission completed, we finally, we send our recovery teams to pick up, to evaluate and pick up and remove the household hazardous materials from those properties. Those materials consist of paints and propane cylinders and pesticides, compressed gas cylinders, pool chemicals, bulk asbestos. If it's easy, it would be removed within roughly about thirty minutes on the asbestos, high-pressure gas cylinders, any kind of ammunition that might still be intact. We collect those materials. If they're not stable, we stabilize them. We pack them up and we move them to our temporary staging facility, in this case, would be in Salem. And we bulk those materials and we prepare them for transportation and disposal to a licensed landfill facility. The landfill facility, facility we're going to use is likely an out-of-state resource to not overwhelm local capacity on the landfills. Roughly, when EPA is working on a property, depending on the size of that property, our actual mission for the Phase One work takes roughly one to four hours. So, we're not there for quite that long. And then, once we're done, we pass that information back to the state, and they can prepare that property to be entered into the Phase Two if the residents so deem they signed up for, for the ash and trash or the ash and debris removal process that I think the state is taking on with the counties. I think, right there, I'll pause. I think that covers our whole mission. I'll pause for you for questions or wait for the end. Thank you.
I don't see any questions. I appreciate, it sounds pretty, you're doing some work pretty fast. And Clackamas County's next week where you'll be onsite?
Correct.
That's great. The great news. And that's just Phase One of the cleanup, and then we go to Phase Two, which we're still trying to determine. Well, the state's paying for that, Phase Two, and, right?
Well, yeah. Well, FEMA has not determined yet what they're going to be doing for Phase Two of personal property disaster removal. So, we're waiting for that to determine our next steps.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. Any other, any other questions or comments?
I will just put one last plug in. Remember, Phase One is free to residents. If you haven't gotten your ROE in yet, please do that as soon as possible so we can come to your property. Thank you.
Thank you. Seen any, no more? Gary, what's up?
All right. Thank you, team. We'll move on then to your public hearing, commissioners. This is a first reading of an ordinance adding Clackamas County Code Chapter Eight Point One Zero, Short Term Rentals, and amending Clackamas County Code Chapter Two Point Zero Seven. We have Nate Boderman from County Council to present. I expect a lot of public comment today, Chair, so I do suggest maybe in about thirty minutes, we take a brief break if we have a lot of comments. Thank you.
After, after Nate presents?
Well, no, around the eleven-thirty hour, if we're still going, take a brief break.
Okay, thank you. Nate?
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Gary, everybody out there watching today. Hey, Christina, could you bring on Martha Fritz? She's actually going to be handling the bulk of the presentation. And while we're waiting for Martha to come on, I'll just mention that, as Gary said, this is the first reading of an ordinance of a topic that you all are familiar with, short-term rentals. And so, the, the plan today is to hold a public hearing for you to take testimony, consider what's being said, and to, to do the first reading, which procedurally obviously needs to be done before any adoption can take place. So, that's what we have for you. I'm actually going to turn it over to Martha at this point, so she can get right into the staff presentation. And then I presume we'll open it up for public testimony with an eye towards eleven-thirty being sort of a breaking, breaking point. So, Martha?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Christina, could you also bring Jennifer Hughes up? I, can I share my screen? I have a PowerPoint. Okay. Oh, there we go. Maybe.
We got it.
There we go. Okay. Well, good morning. I'm Martha Fritz, Principal Planner with the Counties Planning and Zoning Division. As Nate mentioned, this is the first reading to amend the Clackamas County Code to add Chapter Eight Point One O, Short Term Rentals. I am going to go through a little bit of background of how we got here and specifically what is included in this. I know that some of the board has heard some of this presentation before. But as Gary mentioned, I think there's a good number of members of the public listening, and I just want to make sure everybody is up to speed since we took a break on this project. So, first of all, what are we talking about? Short-term rentals. Well, short-term rental and vacation rental is the use of a dwelling unit or portion of a dwelling unit as a rental for a period of up to thirty consecutive nights. We often see these advertised on online platforms like Airbnb or VRBO. It should be noted that specifically for the section of the code that we're looking at today, a guest house is considered part of the dwelling unit to which it is accessory, even though it may not be attached to it. It is all considered one dwelling unit. So, how did we, oh, wow, excuse me. Why now? There's three main reasons why we are looking at this right now and why we have been looking at this. One is that our zoning and development ordinance really doesn't specifically allow for short-term rentals in any homes. And so, from a zoning perspective, a short-term rental is considered a prohibited use. We know, however, there are hundreds of these operating within Clackamas County. Some of them have been operating for decades up in the resort areas, up on Mount Hood. The, the new online platforms that have shown up over the last several years really have allowed people's use to, to get broadened beyond the traditional resort areas. And so, we know there's a lot more of it going on in the county, and we need to clarify that. We also know, based on some complaints that we've gotten about short-term rental properties, that they do have the potential to negatively impact neighborhoods. And we also know that there are likely a large number of short-term rental operators that are not paying the required transient room tax, which is a tax that is paid by hotels, motels, vacation rentals to, through the finance department to fund some tourism activities. And in tying some regulations to that tax, we could potentially increase compliance and effectively try to level the playing field for some of these operators. And so, now we get to how we got here. This has been a long process, and it's been, it started about two years ago. County staff just started doing some research about what other cities and counties, and particularly in Oregon, are doing to regulate short-term rentals. And I can say that nothing that we are proposing here is particularly groundbreaking. This is something that other jurisdictions across the country and in Oregon have been grappling with for a while. And so, when we talked to these other counties, we really paid, and cities, we, we paid a lot of attention to what was working, what wasn't working, what kind of lessons they learned, so we could then translate that into the proposal that you had before you. We held an internal stakeholders group, a couple of meetings of internal staff from internal departments that may be affected by these regulations, code enforcement, building, housing authority, a number of other departments. There was a very robust public outreach effort. The vast majority of it was in two thousand nineteen. In the spring and summer, we had several very well-attended community meetings and got a lot of good feedback from the community members throughout the whole process. There has been a website setup, social media, press releases, a couple of surveys. We have gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of members of the public. Some, the most recent testimony was included in your packet. I understand there's a few emails that you have received that came in after the packet. But I can assure everybody out there that all of the other testimony that has been received has been sent to the board in the past, and it is all posted on the website if you want to go look for it. We have had at least eight policy sessions with the Board of County Commissioners to discuss this issue, one work session with the Planning Commission. And if we can all think way back to pre-COVID, we had two public hearings earlier this year in January and February twenty twenty. And at those hearings, there was a lot of testimony. The board decided it wasn't, they weren't ready to adopt yet. We had, we scheduled another plan, excuse me, policy session after those two hearings to discuss remaining issues and had originally set up a set of public hearings in April to, to finish the adoption process for these code amendments. But then COVID happened, and the project was put on hold until this fall. And so, that is where we are. So, what are these regulations? Well, the, the Short-Term Rental Registration and Regulation Program that is proposed for the county code would allow short-term rentals in any legal dwelling in unincorporated Clackamas County, including, as I mentioned, the guest house, which is part of the dwelling or accessory dwelling units. But the focus on the word "legal" there, any legally established dwelling. There are a few other caveats I can get into if you have any questions. But importantly, if the dwelling is within the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary, the short-term rental must be the primary, the owner's primary residence or on the same property or tract as the owner's primary residence. Every short-term rental must complete a registration application and register, pay a registration fee, and comply with all of the regulations that are identified in this county code section. Enforcement would, if there's problems, how enforcement is done would largely depend on what the issue is. It would be done through a combination of code enforcement. Sheriff's Office would continue to enforce for infractions that they would enforce on now, things like the noise ordinance, violations of the noise ordinance, illegal activities, illegal parking and blocking roads, things like that. A little more specifically, what is included in the regulations there, there's a number of things. I'm just going to highlight some of them. The, there's a maximum overnight occupancy requirement. It is calculated at two people per bedroom or sleeping area plus four additional. So, in other words, if you had a two-bedroom house, that would be four for the sleeping areas plus an additional four. So, your maximum overnight occupancy would be eight. Doesn't mean that you're only allowed to sleep two people in a bedroom. It just, that's the number for calculating the maximum number of people allowed. It should be noted that even if you have over six bedrooms, the maximum is fifteen. So, there is a cap to that. There are parking requirements, a minimum of one off-street parking space, and after that, one space per two sleeping areas. One change that was made between the drafts that were at the previous hearings and policy sessions is that there has been a small exception added to the parking for, specifically for dwellings that were approved under the Resort Accommodations category in the Rural Tourist Commercial Zoning District on Mount Hood. It is a zoning district found only, I believe, in the communities of Government Camp, Rhododendron, and Welch's. And I apologize if I missed one, but it's only on Mount Hood. It is a specific zoning district that allows, through the land use process, for resort accommodations to be built, but lets on-street parking count toward their maximum parking requirements. And so, that exception essentially says that you're not required to provide any additional off-street parking than what was required through your land use approvals. There are a number of what I call building life-fire safety regulations, things like smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, code-compliant hot tub and pool barriers, evacuation routes. All of that would be verified through a self-inspection form. That form would be provided by the county at the time of application. Nothing in the proposal would change anything about the noise ordinance, but a registrant would be required to post the quiet hours within the unit. And then, of course, would be required to comply with the noise ordinance, just like any other dwelling. There is a requirement to post like a placard or notice inside of the unit with emergency contact information, the registration number, maximum occupancy, quiet hours, a few other pieces of pertinent information. I mean, this is a very standard thing that you find if any of you have ever rented a, a house like out on the beach on the Oregon coast. You walk in and all of this information is usually posted there for you. It's, it's intended to help the renter remember what the regulations are to, to avoid some of the problems. There will also, at the time of registration, be a notice mailed to neighbors with a twenty-four-hour contact of the operator or owner in case there are any issues. I mentioned there are a number of other regulations, things like a requirement to register and pay the transient lodging taxes, maintain garbage removal, proof of insurance, and other things that are included in the attachment that was in your packet. And then a few important considerations as we move through this adoption process. If adopted, this program is proposed to take effect on July first of two thousand twenty-one. That time is needed to get the program up and running, get staff trained, forums created, websites created, public outreach completed. And it will also give operators a certain amount of time to And it will also give operators a certain amount of time to get ready for this and potentially put away some money for fees. However, the registration fee and any other fines associated with non-compliments are not going to be adopted through this particular adoption process with these code amendments. They will be adopted through the normal fees and fines adoption process that occurs as the boards, as part of the board's budget adoption in 2021. I don't, off the top of my head, know what month that is. But it should be noted that the way that this is drafted and all of the, the feedback that we've heard from the Board of County Commissioners leads us to a fee of roughly $800 to $900 for every two years. That assumes full cost recovery for the program, for administering the program and also for additional code enforcement to, to help with certain issues that might come up. And so that fee is based on the staffing and an assumption using the best information we have of the number that would potentially register. Then again, that would be for two years. So this is, the adoption process is a little confusing, but I tried to outline it here because it's going to involve two sets of amendments that need to be adopted. So today we're looking at the county code amendments, which would contain the entire registration program, all the rules and regulations that are specific to short-term rentals, the application processes, enforcement processes. Those amendments need to be adopted through this first and second reading with the board. Then there are some zoning code amendments that need to happen through a separate process. And they're largely to eliminate conflicts between this new code that will be going into the county code and the ZDO specifically allow short-term rentals. Notice has already gone out for these adoptions. I'm not really going to spend any time talking about them today. But it really just includes amending the definition of a dwelling unit to make it clear that short-term rentals are allowed. And then removing, there's a specific prohibition on using a guest house for a source of rental income and that would need to be removed. To get this done by the end of the year, it's a pretty tight adoption schedule. Today is the first reading of the county code amendments. The second reading of the county code amendments is scheduled for Wednesday, November 25th. We had originally scheduled and advertised that for Thursday, November 17th. And we've had to change that, so we'll make sure that that information gets out to all the folks that might want to attend that meeting. And then the zoning code amendments, that process needs to go first through our Planning Commission and then through the Board of County Commissioners. And so the first hearing with the Planning Commission is scheduled for Monday evening, November 23rd. The second hearing in front of the Board of County Commissioners is scheduled for Wednesday, December 9th at 9:30. If the board decides to adopt the zoning code amendments, the formal ordinance adoption would be on Thursday, December 17th. It's important to note that that would be the adoption only for the, for the ZDO amendments. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if the board decides to adopt the county code amendments with the entire short-term rental program, the actual final adoption would be at that Wednesday, November 25th hearing. And that is it. I am happy to answer questions about anything, well, related to short-term rentals.
Yeah, thank you Martha. And I'm going to state this for everyone, every department and person involved from a staff level of regards to helping us through this. We have had a lot of meetings. So this is, this is no reflection. I appreciate all the work you've done on this. I know this is complicated. It kind of reminds me of the vehicle registration fee to some degree. I want to make sure that my concerns are very clear. And I, that might mean I repeat myself a couple of times throughout this morning, but I want to make it perfectly clear, my, my concern that I have. So when we met in October, I had asked a question and I kind of left there with the feeling that we could, we have a two-part process and that one part would be approving Section 8 dash whatever it may be. And that at the later date, that we would actually have a separate process for the fee aspect of this. But now I see it's kind of interweaved together. I do see that in the future, in the near future, there's a discussion about setting the fee. But I, I just left with the impression in October that they wouldn't be weaved together like they are today. So I want to just say that, that upfront, my, my concern is that overall, the big picture stepping back is that we're, you know, we don't involve ourselves in business practices and charge fees for types of businesses. So this seems to be an exception to that kind of a rule. What, one thing Martha specifically, a question to you, could you go back? I, I combed through the October packet and I combed through this packet today, which is a lot, a lot of paper, a lot of paperwork. But your PowerPoint was not included in today's presentate, in today's packet. So if you could just go back to the, the element of exception on parking and cover that one more time. Cause I'm trying to look for it in the, in the material that I have with regards to parking. And so there's an on-street parking and an off-street parking. And I think that the code I read, the proposed code only speaks to off-street parking primarily.
Yes, so that is something that has been added since the draft that you saw in, at the October policy session. And I'm looking over here because I'm trying to find it in the packet. It is, it is in the 11-5 hearing draft of the proposed code amendments on page four. And it is under D parking and it's D3. And it says, "Short-term rentals in dwellings approved under the resort accommodations category in the rural tourist commercial district are not required to provide more off-street parking than was required, required and approved under zoning and development ordinance provisions." And that's something that had come up in some of the public testimony at the previous hearings. And we realized that because there's this unique resort accommodations use in that specific zone that approves dwellings that sometimes do not have off-street parking, that it wouldn't make any sense to require additional off-street parking if they had already gone through the process and been approved under our zoning code, specifically as resort accommodations. So that is a new addition and it is found only in the draft that you received in your packet.
Okay, and if someone, if someone in your department could send me the PowerPoint into my email right now, that I'd probably appreciate it so I can at least comb through that. I want to make it perfectly clear that I, I really do want to make sure that we allow short-term rentals in Clackamas County because currently they're disallowed. So I want to make sure that it's abundantly clear, I want to allow it. Where I have a little bit of problem with is that, is the fee elements and the fact that it may not really be proportional to some, for some folks and maybe unnecessary for others that are taking other steps and precautions to ensure that the neighborhood impacts are minimalist at best. So that's, that's the part I'm struggling with. But I'm totally on board with making sure we provide in our code, allowing the short-term rental industry to exist legally. That's all I have for now.
Oh Paul, you said that the fee structure was intertwined. The fee structure today is not part of the discussion. That's part of the budget process next, next year. There will be a fee, but what that fee is, is determined next year, correct Martha?
That is true. I felt it would be a little disingenuous to not mention that there's a fee and what we are at least initially expecting it to be. But that number in the PowerPoint is not what will be adopted today.
Yeah, but what we, yeah, and, and taking the PowerPoint out of the topic or out of the conversation for a moment, in the packet, in the presentation, it's, that's where it's weaved.
Okay, all right, so Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a, a kind of a classic situation which, in which there's no simple, clean, pure, easy answer. We are trying to balance the property rights of individuals again, that own a piece of property and, and their desire to rent it out, whether it's short-term or long-term, against the, the right of quiet enjoyment of others that live next door to that same piece of property. In reading some of the information that came in on recent emails, there was a quote that I thought was pretty well-taken and that is, "You cannot control that which you do not regulate." I thought, well, that was pretty well said. I think what we're trying to do is find a, a balanced point that allows people to use their properties, but in an appropriate manner that is less burdensome to the neighbors. And I guess you would call this a compromise kind of, of approach. But I agree with Commissioner Savis, it should, it should be allowed with appropriate rules and regulations and opportunities to enforce rules and regulations where people are misbehaving in those same neighborhoods. So I think we need to move forward with it. I, I did want to make one correction. I, I don't believe it is currently disallowed. It is simply not spoken to in our code. Am I correct on that? Hello?
Yes, sorry, I had to unmute. Yes, our code is silent right now about short-term rentals.
Yeah, I thought that that was the case. So I, I, you know, this is not a perfect world and it's certainly not a perfect piece of, of legislation on our part, but I think it will help, help people in, in the neighborhoods and give us some tools to, to deal with the miscreants. So I'm prepared to move forward at the chair's discretion.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, just, just one other thing. I think the best way to really look at this, you know, for a comparison basis and in past years, what the county has done. And that's what we did for home occupation businesses many years ago, before I was even on the commission. So basically, we, we allowed that, but we allowed a process, you know, in which people can get approved and apply for it. But there's not a fee for a home occupation business. There's a process where you need to spend a few dollars to get there, but there's not an annual fee for home occupation. If I'm wrong on that, please, please point that out now.
Was the question if there's a fee for a home occupation?
Yes.
Yes, so yes, there is a fee to apply for a home occupation and the home occupation is, permit is good for three years. Right, Ken?
Okay.
And so you have to renew it every three years and pay another fee.
Right, so okay, so yeah, so can you, can you just give me a bunch of ballpark of what that, what that fee is for home occupation?
It is $520.
Okay, for three years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course, code enforcement's probably not a primary, a, a big issue with home businesses. I'm sure that's true. So Gary, I don't see other, any other questions. Do we want to take a break now before we start testimony?
That's actually a good idea, maybe a five or 10-minute break and then we'll get into testimony.
All right, let's, uh, see at 11:30. So that's a seven-minute break. Thank you. All right, so we got enough to get started, Gary.
All right, so if you'd like to open the public hearing, we can take public comment.
Let's, let's do that. And Christina, Christine?
I'm here. Thank you, Chair Bernard. I'll be coordinating public comment for the specific public hearing and later for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide comments specific to this public hearing, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. And if you're calling in by phone, you would want to hit star nine. Again, we'll open public comment on any topic related to county business in a little while. But if you have a comment related to this matter, please select the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone. And I do see some, some hands raised. And we also have about six emails that I'll read at the end of the public comment. So I will go ahead and bring Craig Theory over. Craig, if you can unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you Christina. I'm just going through and read the draft regulation. I've been to some of the prior meetings and I'm, I'm the one who had a duplex, but I partitioned into two single-family residence properties and wanted to make sure that I was going to continue to be able to do short-term rental. And I, I don't see things written the same way they were, they were drafted before about adjacent property, et cetera. So I was hoping maybe Martha could speak to that. I just want to make sure you guys gave me the impression earlier that that would be okay and covered in the draft reg, but I can't quite see that to confirm that that's the case.
May, may I?
Yes.
To my knowledge, that language has not changed from the last draft. It is, it is in, I'm scrolling down here. It's under the provision for, within the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary. Cause I think you were in the urban growth boundary, correct?
I thought not, I'm in Oak Grove, I thought that was outside of that.
You're in the urban growth boundary.
I am.
So it has to do with the, it's the language under the primary residence. And so we added the, the tract language. A tract is properties owned, adjacent properties owned by the same owner.
Oh, okay, so it's the definition of tract that I did not understand, that's perfect.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next one, Scott Fairley. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Yes, I'm president of the Alpenglade Home Owners Association. We have short-term rental restrictions already. And we've, you know, we've been through this several times and most of our people are in favor of these regulations. A strong majority favor them because of the complaints relating to noise and parking and other issues. And one of the other issues that I'm concerned about and that our people are concerned about is the garbage situation. We have, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife is aware of this. We, we got a serious bear problem that even continues now and they're supposed to be hibernated. And if these garbage cans are just set out willy-nilly and they're not picked up until the following week, you get a horrible mess. And, and what I would say is that that provision about the garbage should be, should require that the garbage cans, unless they're secured some way inside a closed garage, be set out only on pickup days, like when Bliss Sanitary, sanitary picks them up. And/or if the ravens knock them over, which they frequently do, or worse, short-term rental people sometimes just throw out plastic bags and expect them to be picked up, that the mess is the responsibility of the owner. And that should be clearly posted so we know who to call when there's garbage and debris and everything scattered all over the roads. That's the, that's the first concern. The other concern is the off-street parking exception. And there's already a big issue up there. And these are, you know, maybe the resort places, I don't know. But people that park in some of those early-on places, block that road on, particularly on Blossom, right at the sharpest corner. And if, if we don't have off-street parking requirements, even for some of these that are grandfathered, it is a serious and dangerous problem. And it also prevents open plowing of the road after a big snowfall. So those are my two comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like next up is going to be Les Poole. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Good morning, am I coming through all right?
Yep.
Good, I sometimes get a weak signal. Yeah, this issue is one that I'm not opposed to, but I have concerns about how we're going to administrate it. Well, because I see some hidden landmines here and, and maybe some others that aren't hidden. And one of, one of the subjects that's clearly being discussed and I think has been partially addressed, but not completely, is to park- and I think has been partially addressed, but not completely, is the parking issue. And the gentleman before me just alluded to it, so I don't need to repeat his comments about parking. You know, we live in a time when we're really promoting walkability, but these folks are going to come by car, they're going to live by car, and I think the parking could use a touch up or some more consideration here. It's kind of an odd time for this, but I understand why we're doing it. Obviously tourism is down, but I see this type of 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 use not being, you know, confused with tourism versus an ADU. So if you could just briefly comment for the public so they know some folks get the ADUs confused with the tourism and with, you know, with an Uber or and just for the record, a little more clarity about what exactly this is would be appreciated after I'm done. And I think it was very wise to use the UGB as a as the the obvious place for for differentiation, and I I support you doing that. I I would just close that we've had some issues with citizen awareness, citizen participation and involvement. And they came up recently in a meeting. And I I'd just like to know, I don't think you could necessarily answer right now, but I'd like to know how many participants have there been in the process, because it's been on hold, and we're picking it up. And while you folks have continued to work on it, there's been a great big gap in citizen awareness. So I I want to make sure the public gets more involved with some of these things so that we're not fixing them or you're not being questioned or challenged afterwards. Very good presentation, by the way, Martha. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know that there was a specific question. Just wanted to note that there are estimated 1,000 STRs in Clackamas County right now that really aren't legal. So we're trying to fix that. Back to you, Christina.
All right, next up is Gerald Murphy. If you would like to unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Commissioners, Martha, Jennifer. It's been a while, and I'll talk to you again on Monday. But I will have a few things to say about insurance at that time, but I also want to piggyback the last two callers about parking. That is essential. I think that we have onsite parking at least one extra spot because of snow removal and plugging up streets. Some of these streets up in the Mount Hood area are very narrow, and it doesn't take much to plug them up. Start adding a few extra cars, and we have issues. But my call today would be about the short term rentals. Their popularity is taking away long term rentals, and I would like to, I'm asking the commission in the future to consider rewarding long term rentals instead of penalizing short term rentals. Come up with some program that encourages people to not move to a short term rental, to still provide that worker housing, affordable housing. It's getting further and further away for our workers in this area to travel back and forth to work at these minimum wage jobs. So I just wanted to add this to your workload. I know you have plenty to do. Anyway, I'll see you Monday. Take care.
Thank you, Gerald. Christina?
We have, next up is going to be Kai. Oh, nope, hold on. Sorry. Just one second. Hit the wrong button.
Kai's there.
I just got to change him back over to as attendee. I've just got to, sorry. It was all my fault. All right, Kai, I am going to allow you to speak here in just one second. Let me get back down to you. Okay. If you want to unmute yourself, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. Thanks, Christina. Can you guys hear me okay? Yep. Okay, fantastic. Everything that I've been reading through and everything that I've heard so far makes absolute sense. It makes a lot of sense, especially in the city limits and even the then the urban growth boundary. I'm out way out in the country, down a private road on some acreage with a beautiful view. And one thing that I really wanted to consider or have the option of doing is having like an airstream or a tiny home that I actually have on on other properties in other parts of Oregon and allow like a retreat for like a writer or for but I noticed that inside here, it's saying that it will not allow short term rentals of RVs, tents, barns, shops, or other similar structures. I just wanted to kind of address that and see why that is, especially for folks like me, where we don't have a trash issue, we don't have parking issue or noise issue or anything like that, and we can do something that's still safe and have it inspected by the county. But, you know, like an airstream, I don't know why that is saying that we can't short term rent that out.
Okay, Kai, you know, Martha or Jennifer, I don't remember that discussion. I'm sure we had it a million times, but do we have a response to that?
Yes. So essentially, the zoning ordinance doesn't allow it. So this from the beginning has really been about kind of business regulations and then just minimally syncing up the zoning ordinance to make it clear that you can rent out a lawful dwelling on a short term basis. The idea of establishing additional types of structures and then renting those out would really need a more significant overhaul of the zoning code. In some zones, it might be allowed, but not in all of them. And so it's just it's just a bigger project and kind of outside the scope of where we are with the the short term rental project.
So I guess, oh, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, it's a, so if we did set that up on the on the property to have like an airstream for a couples retreat or writers retreat, would that be something that'd be shut down by the county, or what what would be the consequences?
So it would depend. I mean, we are complaint driven, so it could potentially result, yes, in code enforcement. There are options to do campgrounds, and it's not as though you have to have a certain number of spaces. So you could potentially do a small campground, but it depends on the zone. They're not allowed in all zones, and in some cases, we're limited by state law. So it'd be a real property specific question. But certainly, planning could could help you navigate that if you wanted to explore the possibility.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Well, I think I don't see anybody else's hand raised, so it's probably emails.
Yes, I will move on to emails. If anybody wants to speak, they can definitely go ahead and raise their hand while I'm reading the emails. But as of right now, we're moving on. Okay, so the first email is from Josh Powell in Government Camp. First off, I'd like to say that I understand and support the need for STR regulations in Clackamas County. I would like to offer offer testimony and request a change for parking requirements for STRs located in RTZ or RTC zoning. Since development allows the use of street parking to count towards the required parking spaces for units, I ask that this same allowance be considered for STRs with regard to parking. If it is relevant, my specific desires about this pertain to property we own off Government Camp Loop in Government Camp. The zoning is RTZ and street parking is plentiful there. To allow street parking for STRs would not inhibit or impact parking for any businesses or other residences since it is to the east of town by .1 miles. Thank you for your consideration, Josh Powell. The next one is going to be from Joseph Field. Says, Dear Board of County Commissioners, I understand that you will meet tomorrow to discuss the Clackamas County's short term rental ordinance. I respectfully request that you add this email with my comments. In my capacity as a owner of the condominium in Government Camp, I strongly oppose to the draft short term rental ordinance to the extent that will apply to self governing communities with monitored access onsite property management and security like Collins Lake Resort in Government Camp, Oregon. Our onsite property management and security handles issues year round and around the clock. I do not think the Oregon city based compliance and enforcement officers would add any value to the Collins Lake Resort, especially with no unaddressed issues exist. I speak from experience because I spend significant time in the winter at my Collins Lake Resort condominium without issue from renters and adjoining condominiums or otherwise. I have rented my condominium to visiting vacationers in the summer for many years without issue. I'm a big supporter of local government and enhanced community services and resources. I feel that the implementation of this ordinance at Collins Lake Resort and similar self governing, high density vacation communities would, without justification, at an unnecessary cost without providing any corresponding benefit. I urge you to take these points into account if you adopt the ordinance, and I hope that if you do so, you'll draft the ordinance narrow narrowly enough to exempt the Collins Lake Resort and any like situated professional managed vacation communities.
I'd like to comment. Are you done?
No, yeah, it just says thank you for your community.
I'd just like to comment on this. We have actually talked quite a bit with Collins Lake Resort. And that's where the fee structure comes in. You know, those right, they have their own security. So the fee structure in the future may consider a number of units, for example, at a resort like that. The other thing is, is that the whole idea behind this is full cost recovery. You know, if everybody obeys the rules and there's no problem, there isn't a lot of code enforcement. That saves a lot of money. So I mean, I think it's really important to note that the fewer enforcement issues, the less cost. And and there's an opportunity to, you know, lower the rate in the future or consider when it's made. But that's something that we have talked about. We'll see what happens in the future. I won't be here, so it'll be up to you guys. All right, Christina, use more hands.
Okay, I have a couple more emails. This one is from Kevin Ikey. Says, I also own a condominium in Collins Lake in Government Camp. Like Mr. Field, I'm using my condominium for personal use and rent it out to vacationers who enjoy the Mount Hood area. Much like Mr. Field, I strongly oppose the draft short term rental ordinance to the extent that it would apply to self governing communities with monitored access onsite property management and security like Collins Lake and Government Camp. Our onsite property management and security handle issues year round and around the clock. Like Mr. Field said, I also feel that the implementation of this ordinance in Collins Lake and similar self governing high density vacation communities without justification at an unnecessary cost with providing any corresponding benefit. I urge you to take these points into account if you adopt this ordinance, and I hope that if you do so, you draft an ordinance narrowly enough to exempt Collins Lake Resort and any like situated professionally managed vacation communities. Okay, on to the next one. This one's from Brian Ferring. Says, Hello, I'm a homeowner in Welch's. I'm writing to express my support for continuing to allow short term rentals in Clackamas County. I know there are concerns that residents have, especially with housing availability. Increased subsidizing housing stock to permit residences on fixed low income paid for by STR taxes is my suggestion. I hope you guys don't go the route that Cannon Beach has gone of disallowing short term rentals used to keep the community exclusive. Mount Hood can grow the developed responsibility without displacing any anyone or losing without making it special. Providing lodging opportunities close to the mountain will be great for local businesses and tourism dollars, allowing for the improvement of many existing recreational areas. Clackamas County and Mount Hood Village Community can do with the potential taxes brought in by short term rentals, and I think it would be better for the local economy in the long run.
Thank you.
All right, next one is Ariel Stevenson. Hello, my name is Ariel Stevenson, and my husband and I own a house subject to the proposed short term rental ordinance in Welch's. The written testimony is respectfully submitted. In opposition to several elements in the proposed ordinance, we request at least a 14 day continuance of the first reading as explained below. While we sympathize with neighbors who have bad experience with STRs and do not object to the general concept of registering our home with the county, paying a modest fee and providing adequate parking, the proposed ordinance goes much too far and requires far too much compliance work. Consequently, the cost of the compliance will be unattainable for many of us. There are also legal errors in the proposal, which I explained below. A bit about us, my husband and I are full time workers and full time parents of two small girls. We save for years for a small house near Mount Hood. We finally purchased in Welch's and have been vacant for several years. We invested substantial sums and personal sweat into upgrading the home, cleaning the yard, and building decks and fences. This was financed almost entirely with income we obtained from short term rentals. Our home has three bedrooms and six off street parking spots. We do not have a hot tub, and we have a no party policy. With the exception of a single errant frisbee, we have never had a single complaint from our neighbors. Rather than, rather, we have received nothing but support and appreciation from our neighbors, making a vacant home alive, clean, and maintained again. Goes on, The proposed ordinance goes too far in the following respects. Staff has incorrect that short term rentals are not currently permitted in single family zones. For the most part, homes that rent are occupied by their owners. For us, a second home is principally used for a family vacation home. In both instances, occasional renting of the home is paying customers is traditional, common, and accessory activity. The homes are used in the same way as the owners would use them, eating, sleeping, house gatherings, et cetera. The commission should be aware that the online services like VRBO help people connect with those who wish to rent homes, listing a home on such websites does not make the principal use of that home a vacation rental. There is sufficient or insufficient evidence, excuse me, in the record that STR guests suffer from unsafe accommodations. Therefore, the requirement for site plans, interior plans, inspections, egress windows, and liability insurance are not supported by the adequate factual base and should be eliminated. It is easy to think that these items are good ideas, but they will be extremely expensive and time consuming for owners to comply with our home that was built in 1971 and is fully consistent with the codes in place at the time, as well as the modern requirements for smoke detectors, et cetera. Subject to ORS Chapter 90, we could rent the home to a full time tenant without any additional items and propose section 8.10.060.0G required for short term rentals. Therefore, the requirements in section 8.10.060 do not appear to be a reasonable exercise of the county's police power and instead appear to have a way of reducing the number of STRs by increasing the cost of difficult compliance. Moreover, the requirement for a specific type of insurance is unreasonable intrusion of contractual relationships and cannot be supported by the evidence in the record. To the extent there is a dispute between our owner and short term rental, that is between the owner and rental, and the county has identified no basis for it to require certain types of insurance. To my knowledge, there is no similar requirement in long term rental housing and principal distinction has been identified that suggests a certain type of insurance product is necessary for short term rentals. It does go on. It's over three minutes. Should I continue reading?
I don't think it's necessary. What do you guys think? It's just, it'll be part of the record. If you guys want to read the rest, fine. Is that, what do you guys think?
I'm okay.
I'm okay. Paul?
How much is left?
Um, I am about two thirds of the way through.
Go ahead, read it.
Okay. We never received the written notice of this proposed plan amendment as required by ORS 215-503. And there's no explanation in the staff report that the notice was actually sent out to the all the homeowners in the county as required. In fact, we obtained notice of this hearing only today for the reason we respectfully requested the board continue the hearing for the first reading for at least 14 days so we can analyze the proposal more deeply. The board should understand that we cannot afford any of the work we've done without short term rentals. Although we sympathize with residents who may have bad experience, this ordinance, whether intentional or not, seems to be ladder pulling by those lucky enough to have been able to buy their vacation homes when they were substantially cheaper and had the family money to do so and not need to rent them as STRs to afford them. The board should also consider that the good that STRs have done for the business and communities where they are located. At least before COVID nineteen, STRs were a major generation of terrorism dollars to restaurant bars and recreational businesses. Imposing a complex, such a complex and burdensome compliance scheme for short-term rentals can only hurt those businesses that need help the most. Finally, the board should note that many of these communities are tourist communities, first and residential communities, second. In our case, Welch's is named after Samuel Welch, who developed the first golf course in the state along with hotels and cottages. Welch's has always been a place where people vacation. At least as far as Welch's is concerned, it's simply bizarre and retrograde for the county to impose such restrictive STR requirements. Says, again, we understand the pressure of the board to curtail short-term rentals and support some of the proposed ordinance. However, the regulations as proposed would like would have an outsized impact on those of us who neither the time nor the money to maintain a second home without short-term rental income. Moreover, many of those regulations do not seem targeted and eliminate conflicts with neighbors and instead seem simply make it difficult for home for to offer a home for short-term rentals. That's the end. If anybody wants to add, any comments?
No, thanks.
Perfect. I will move on to the next one. This one is from Todd Enne. I want to express concerns regarding proposed short-term rental regulations. We have a vacation rental in Government Camp that we rent using Airbnb and VRBO. Taxes are reported and paid monthly through My Lodge Tax. The house was remodeled with permits in two thousand and fourteen and confirms conforms to all respects of safety, parking and reservation restrictions proposed in the regulations. The county would be adding a layer of bureaucracy with added costs to homeowners with little to no benefit. The proposal has lots of good ideas but lacks the teeth to enforce them, leaving owners like myself to already confirm to the proposed standards by a large annual bill and added hassle. Please review current law enforcement respect response to Government Camp. Note the duration of spent by any law enforcement in Government Camp over a month period. I've owned a house in Govee for five years and never seen a law officer under any circumstances. Parking, illegal parking, parties, underage drinking, et cetera. State parole has an office that they spend two hours a week doing paperwork in, and that's it. Agencies will not even respond to active crimes unless they receive more than one phone call from at least two separate numbers. Law enforcement in Government Camp exists primarily post-offense rather than prevention or apprehension. Under the current circumstances and relative to the lack of law enforcement in Government Camp, the proposed will result in the following. One, in an already difficult time to COVID and economy, owners will have yet another financial burden to contend with. Two, the proposal aims to enforce guidelines via an internal enforcement team in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department. Most of offense outlines, party, excessive groups, noise after ten, illegal parking, et cetera, will not be taken place during regular business hours. Unless both county officials and limited sheriff resources plan on making regular drives between Oregon City, Clackamas, which is more than two hours round trip during the normal driving conditions. This communication or community is located four thousand feet with an average of three hundred inches of snow annually. The enforcement of active offensive will be non-existent. Two-hour driving time with one hour of intervention will eat up a good portion of a sheriff's shift. Do you really think they're going to respond to noise, parking, et cetera? I'm sure the number of trips taken annually by county sheriffs to Government Camp can be found somewhere in the public record. But my guess is to delegate less than two percent of county resources to the community. To think that one of the two county officials hired to oversee the new short-term regulations might somehow pick up the slack, especially outside of business hours of after six P M, is ridiculous. Number three, ultimately, more serious violations are committed by guests, not owners. As an owner, I can do my best to qualify guests, but sometimes they sneak in a pet, report less people than actually saying, wander onto a neighbor's property after, or excuse me, and are loud after ten, illegally park on the street, et cetera, despite our warnings. Excuse me, that will keep their two hundred and fifty dollar damage deposit. It is very, very rare, but it happens. Under the proposed, the consequence of bad guests would fall under the owner. As I'm sure the complaint were received, they would promptly be addressed and followed up the next business day during working hours after the guest is already long gone, because again, there's no significant active law enforcement group in Government Camp. So ultimately, you would want to charge a one-time permit registration fee and inspection of a short-term rentals to ensure homeowners are paying their taxes and adhering to normal standards that provides safety and comfort to both the guests and community. That seems reasonable. Make the permit non-transferable, so new owners would have to adhere to the same guidelines. It also seems reasonable to have a consequence for owners that have a certain number of credible complaints, such as revocation of rental permit, a nuisance property is a nuisance property. But to take a very small percentage of complaints and use it to develop a new program that is both expensive to the owners and doesn't serve resolve issues due to complete and utter lack of resources is foolish. Thank you. And then I do see that we do have two hands raised in the attendees part. I will go ahead and bring over Brett Fisher. You have three minutes. If you can, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, hi Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I got, well, personally, I'm very involved in Government Camp and I've spoken before. I'm vice chair of the local CPO. I'm on the sanitary district board. I also manage two homeowners associations in both Collins Lake Resort and the Grand Lodges. And we also have a vacation rental rental management company where we have about a hundred condominiums that we manage. So I'm going to be speaking today on behalf of that regard, not the CPO or the sanitary district. But as Commissioner Humberson mentioned, I can relate to this from the sanitary district because we had to have very specific guidelines and differentiate rentals, long-term rentals, short-term rentals and owner-occupied units for the sanitary district up in Government Camp. So it is a difficult situation to solve, so I can relate to that. A couple of comments. From the HOA standpoint, we are self-governing and we do everything that you're trying to solve here within the community and within the HOA dues. One of my concerns specifically is the cost, and I know we don't know what that cost is going to be yet, but I think the Commissioners should take into consideration something that everybody in Government Camp, and not just Government Camp now, but a lot of other places, is the insurance, property insurance race rate increase. We've had in both associations about a four hundred percent increase in our premium, which is causing HOA dues to get significantly higher. And it's going to continue to rise this year after this summer's problems. So that's one consideration is just the cost and what the burden that that's going to be. Next would be Government Camp is very unique in its setting, and we don't know what's going to happen yet with the ski areas. I'm actually vice president of well of the Ski Bowl Group of Companies and we're all a little bit nervous of what this winter season looks like with the COVID issue and what the tourism in general is going to look like in Government Camp. And so it's got us a little anxious of what's going to happen here and adding costs right now would be a difficult burden for a lot of the homeowners that I speak with and manage their properties would be dealing with. I think that from a registration standpoint and how we operate as a vacation rental management company, I think is a good idea and I'm not here to just tell you the problems. I think one solution might be to approach this as requiring registration and a small fee to process that administratively makes sense. And it would also allow you to make sure you're collecting the the lodging taxes on the various properties. I would suggest doing so within the guidelines that you've set out and implementing a very heavy fine for people who do not register and who are reported as being a short-term rental. How you prove that, I'm not quite sure, but I think that would be one way to to at least start this process. Because I think working the other way is counterproductive, where you're charging people a fee that's much higher than you know what the costs are going to be, because we don't know what those costs are going to be yet. There's going to be very little enforcement in Government Camp. There'll be even less enforcement in Collins Lake again, because we're a self-governing community, as Joe Field mentioned in his email as well. You know, how, what that fee looks like and what the fine would be for somebody not registering? I don't know. I just think that's something that we should look at. And again, I'm concerned about the fee amount, not so much the process. Registration is great. Let's make sure people are paying their due taxes. Let's make sure that we level the field in those regards. But I'm scared of even an eight, nine hundred dollar fee. Makes me nervous for my homeowners' property values and what we're already paying in HOA dues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to get to my unmute button. Okay, so we have one last person. It looks like their name is C. Gam. If you can unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Well, thanks for taking the time. Listen to me. I'm just calling in on kind of behalf, maybe the community and the workers, not so much the HOAs and the resorts around here, but more towards the single-family homes in the neighborhoods. The people up here cleaning these Airbnbs and working on these Airbnbs, they are having trouble finding places to live. I live on a street with ten houses, five of them are vacant. Except for on the weekends when we get in excess of people. The parking thing, what I hear, I kind of joined in late. I didn't get the email till ten twelve that it was going. My apologies there. But is there any sort of penalties to the renters, owners of these, like free strikes or complaints, law enforcement action? And we've already seen another full-time position to Hoodland Fire Department because of the increase in calls. I think it was over nine hundred last year from incidences. So I wanted to say, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Looks like there's no more hands, and I have read through all the emails.
Thank you. You know, I just want to mention, we know there is a housing problem up in Government Camp. And I'm hoping that the commission in the future will be able to move some money that the metro dollars may help us address the problem metro in the metro area from our budget up to that area to help reduce the cost of building affordable housing for folks working up there. I hope that happens in the future. It is really important. There are people living in the woods. There are lots of challenges. And so I, I hope the future will provide worker housing up in the Government Camp area, Welch's and places like that. Paul?
Yeah, Martha, earlier, one of the callers, I believe it was Kai, who had the question about the Airstream trailer and what sounded that may be an EFU. And I know there's EFU restrictions on a second dwelling, right? You can only have one dwelling. And I'm just kind of wondering what one might entanglements one might have with that being a code enforcement issue with its, you know, essentially a dwelling unit, even though it's a short-term dwelling unit.
Excuse me, Paul, I'm going to interrupt you. And I meant to say that we're closing the public portion of this hearing and we'll go back to the Commissioners for questions. And Paul, you had a question?
Yeah.
Jennifer or Martha?
Well, Jennifer accurately stated that some of the issues with RVs and campers and fifth wheels or temporary dwellings, tents, things like that, they are not considered dwellings. They can be used in certain instances to live in on a temporary basis, or you could have a campground. There are much more restrictions under state law for the farm and forest zoning districts with respect to even allowing campgrounds. And so if somebody lived in a zone where they could get approved for a campground, they could potentially have a campground and rent out the RVs on a short-term basis. But, but there are a number of hurdles, but it's really very zone-dependent.
Okay, I could just imagine someone making the argument that if there is a, I won't say permanent, but essentially what seems to be a permanent RV or type trailer that is being used for short-term rentals, that is there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that it would be considered a dwelling unit. I know, I do know to some degree that that if someone wants to have, if someone owns a piece of EFU and they want to have a long-term rental there, that's not allowed, right? Because it's, it becomes a, it's a dwelling unit, long-term. So could you just elaborate on that a little bit? I mean, because that wouldn't be a, that wouldn't be a campground kind of affair. I do know that we, you know, people cannot on their EFU land, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe I am mistaken, on EFU land, just start lining up and renting out RVs on their property for long-term rentals.
You cannot do that. You can store your RV, you can keep your RV in a stored condition on your property, but you cannot park and hook up an RV and rent it on a long or short-term basis, or not rent it, or have anybody live in it. That's not allowed currently.
Okay. My other question is, is that going back to the discussion of the home occupation, how is this process, I mean, let's just say this passes as it's, as it's written. How is this process, is it an application process and similar to home occupation? And if it differs, how does it differ?
I think Jennifer's. Yeah, sorry. It's different in that this is not a land use application. So the short-term rental registration program is being adopted as a business regulation into the county code. And it will follow the process that's outlined in the draft that we've sent you or as changed by you. But it will not go through a zoning ordinance process the way a home occupation permit does. So it will be administered differently. The other issue to remember, you know, going to your earlier point about the home occupation fee is that the planning department's fees are not set for full-cost recovery. And in particular, our land use applications are not set to recover the code enforcement costs. So code enforcement of zoning violations is paid for by the general fund. And so that is the reason, or a reason, why this fee would potentially be higher. Administrative costs are somewhat controllable based upon how often you ask them to renew it. So for instance, the home occupation permit is on a three-year renewal cycle. So we're only spending staff time looking at it once every three years. And so ultimately, you know, that, that will play into what you do with these short-term rentals is whether it's a two-year permit, which is what we had envisioned. But the more often they have to renew it, the higher the administrative cost is. The flip side is the less often they renew it, the less often potentially on the land use side anyway, that neighbors kind of get a say, which is one of the reasons why home occupations are noticed every three years, so we can check in and see how compatible they are with the neighborhood.
Okay, so I've been a member of my community planning organization for twenty-three years. And so we've had home occupations come through, you know, because the CPO is notified. And I do know with regards to parking, that if, if someone anticipates having more visitors per day than there is parking, that somehow they're almost disallowed or they need to limit that. So that's a difference as well, isn't it?
So the home occupation standards require that vehicles associated with the business be parked on the site. And that's been in our code for years and years. So if they're employee vehicles or customer vehicles, or you know, maybe a business that's actually using some kind of a delivery truck or a, you know, contractor's vehicle or something, those all have to be on the site. There's not a requirement that personal vehicles associated with people's homes, you know, you can park in the right of way if parking is allowed. So with the home occupation, there's a little bit of, is it a business vehicle or is it, you know, your teenage son's car? That, you know, probably poses some enforcement challenges. But yes, the home occupation standards say that all the business-related vehicles need to be parked on the property. And that's a little different than this. In this case, we're setting it saying X number of spaces per number of sleeping areas. But we aren't saying But we aren't saying you can't park in the right of way if you are visiting or, you know, staying in a short-term rental.
Yeah, I, I, I raise all this because what's really relevant is that just the impacts to the neighboring properties. More especially that, that neighborhoods can remain neighborhoods and be livable and not have some of those challenges. So, thank you.
All right. Uh, so, uh, with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, um, I would move to, um, hold, to schedule a second reading and public hearing of the ordinance on November 19th, 2020. And I do have an additional comment.
Uh, you've kind of jumped. Uh, first it'd be to move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Excuse me. I didn't have a script in front of me, so I did jump. Uh, I'll read, I'll withdraw the motion.
And make a motion to move the ordinance by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. And I'll ask, uh, clerk to please poll us.
Uh, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
I know this is only reading by title only. I just think there's a process question. So I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Schrader?
You're muted.
I'll vote aye to read it by title only, but I still have some reservations.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Uh, with that, I'll ask, uh, it, uh, so it's, uh, that'd be four, one. And I'll ask clerk to assign the number, read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number zero nine dash two zero two zero. An ordinance adding Clackamas County Code Chapter eight point one zero, short-term rentals and amending Clackamas Code Chapter two point zero seven.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, further discussion, I'd like to add something here. We have had that many, many meetings on this. We went to you, asked you, did you want to put this on the agenda? It was unanimous that we put it on the agenda. We've gone through that process. We've listened to the citizens and please do not throw this, uh, sideways. Uh, uh, but now let's have some further discussion. I heard some things I had challenges with too. But, uh, so, somebody want to raise their hand? Uh, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is, since I've been on the board, I think this is the most exhaustive public process of any issue that we have addressed in four years. Uh, staff have done yeoman work on this. The, the proposal before us has an incredible number of very direct suggestions that came from the general public, not just from staff, uh, to put this forward. I'm not sure I've ever seen a more exhaustive, uh, public process for, for, uh, an ordinance than this. And, um, so while it certainly isn't perfect and it's a difficult task to balance individual property rights, uh, of an owner versus the, the, um, right of quiet enjoyment to, to the neighbors is a tough, uh, tough balancing act. I think we've gotten as close as we can get at this point in time. Um, I'm sure in the future there will be tweaks necessary that will come before this board. Um, as we learn how to make it work and work right. Um, but I, I think we need to move it forward. Um, and, um, and, and see how it works, uh, to the best of our abilities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is the opportunity to suggest any amendments that will be considered in the second reading, correct? I believe so. So Martha?
Yeah, my reservations are really, uh, it's not, it's not that I don't appreciate the yeoman's work that the staff has done because I think it's been a brilliant piece of, you know, I mean, I, I don't know how you keep everything straight in your head with the complexities of this, quite frankly. So it's very impressive. That's not the issue. My issue is more timing. Uh, at this point, I think we're kind of pulling together another regulatory structure at a time when in the middle of a pandemic, I'm sorry, that's part of the problem I'm having with this. Um, and in the middle of, you know, still trying to figure out crisis with wild fires. And this is something that I think needs to be addressed, but I'm wondering why we're doing it. Because we're dealing with so many other things that for me are a much higher, you know, right now, this would not be as high a priority for me to, to really deal with. And so that's kind of it. And I'm concerned about, uh, the size of the fees because it's going to really take, and you know, um, Commissioner Bernard, you won't be here to be talking about that when we have to come up with that. And I have a feeling that conversation is going to be extremely challenging. And, um, I think that it's going to be real difficult to get it to pay for itself. So anyway, it's just, just trying to say what my reservations are. Thank you.
Well, with, Paul, did you want to say something?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I'll just re, kind of repeat Jim because you kind of raised it, um, about that we did vote or mentioned or say unanimously, we wanted to move this forward. And I just want to qualify that I was under the impression that there will be two, two aspects, two separate processes. One for the regulations allowing it. And then also one that would consider and impose perhaps a fee in the registration aspects that go along with that. And like I said earlier, it appears that they're interweaved here considerably, more so than I anticipated and not necessarily separated. Did I, you know, admittedly, I will say I did not suggest removing or striking the language that was in the October packet. The language is slightly different in eight, one, not, not in any significant way, but the way the, the ordinance and the language is written today, they're, they're weaved more tightly. And the suggestion of the fee is there. And I just think that that is the part that, um, I don't see as really being separate. So if the, if there, if we are, if our goal is to simply allow it and, and have some rules and regs around that, and there's a code enforcement officer element to that, great. And if we want to get to the fees and aspect of that in the future, great. But I really see that today, that most of, and going to a number of those public meetings and listening to all the public testimony, that the neighborhood impacts, um, that are out there, um, aren't necessarily require us to do really much of anything other than enforcement. Now, I mean, parking's an issue. So that's more of a home occupation thing. So granted, if there's a parking, that's why I'm supportive of eight, eight point one with that regard. Um, the part, again, I'm struggling with is that, um, the $320,000 annual estimated cost to, to, to do this requires that people actually register and participate. And, and if, if they don't, and there's a shortfall and that the rest of the taxpayers have to pick that up. It seems to me that, that, um, there ought to be some kind of an enforcement mechanism, not enforcement, but, um, some kind of a backstop that those, those are the department that benefits, in this case tourism. Not really a department, but, but so to speak, a body, um, should be bearing the cost. I mean, it's not dissimilar in situations that if, uh, if you're an employer and you don't pay your taxes, your employee taxes, um, you know, the county doesn't step in and do, and be the tax collector. That is something that's done by the agency who receives the, the taxes, that being the state of Oregon or the federal government or the, uh, Internal Revenue Service. So it seems to me that we are, we are acting on behalf of tourism and yet not really receiving the financial backstops of what we're actually doing. This seems to be more of a direct. And I don't, I'm not anti-tourism. Don't get me wrong. I, I, I totally understand that. But it just seems that there ought to be some kind of a backstop because the general fund shouldn't be bearing the cost of this.
So just so you know, tourism doesn't have enforcement abilities. It's not in statute, not by law. The county, however, does. So a fine structure for not registering is something that could be discussed in the future. And the amount of the fee can be discussed in the future. And I agree, I think it was Murphy who said, there should be a big fine if you don't fi, if you don't register. But, uh, and I, I have issues with the fee too. But I think that's going to be up to you guys in the budget process next year to determine the amount of fee that not only covers the cost, but there could be a fine structure for failing to register too. Correct, Stephen? Here, Mike.
Correct. Yes.
I think that's where you address the code enforcement part is in the, the fine structure. And I agree totally with Murphy that, or whoever said that, that a stiff fine, uh, for not registering is another way to do that. Well, I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to announce that the second reading will be Wednesday, November 25th, 2020, at the board's regular scheduled business meeting at 10 a.m. And we'll move on with, uh, to what, Gary?
Next is the consent agenda. I'll ask Christina to read that, please.
Green. Okay. Today's consent agenda. Health Housing and Human Services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and the Community Development Division for conducting environmental reviews. Uh, approval of a subrecipient grant with Life Works Northwest for intensive case management services. Approval of subrecipient grant with Quest Center for Integrative Health or Wish Program Services. Approval for Public Health Division to apply to the NACCHO Local Climate and Health Demonstration Site Funding Opportunity. Approval of an inter-agency agreement with Health Centers Division to reimburse Public Health Division for client services provided by the Public Health Medical Director at the Health Centers and Beaver Creek Clinic. Approval of subrecipient grant, uh, agreement with Cascadia Behavioral Health Incorporated for residential treatment services. Approval of a subrecipient grant or agreement, excuse me, with Cascadia Behavioral Healthcare Incorporated for assertive community treatment program. Approval of amendment number one to subrecipient grant agreement with Ant Farm Incorporated for, to provide cares, fund, funded rent assistance services. For Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of rights of way easements and fee property for Bear Creek. Uh, can be Markwin Highway Bridge Project and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions. For the Finance Department, approval of a contract with ERP and Analyst Incorporated, uh, doing business as ERP, a group of charts and accounts, reinstallation and people's soft updates. For Technology Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange, City of Portland and Oregon Health and Sciences University for sharing data resources. That's your consent agenda.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain the motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I, I, I'm lost. Two seconds. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, wait, Christina?
I'll poll you. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Schr, uh, Savis, excuse me.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Gary, what's up next?
Next is public communication and Christina will help lead this section.
All right. Thank you. Now is the time for general comment related to any county business. If you have comment related to county business, you can hit the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling in by phone, you can hit star nine now. I will give people a few seconds to do that. I do not have any emails that came into the bcc@clackamas.us email account. And I do not see any hand. Oh, nope, a hand just raised. Let me go ahead and bring over Angela Nyland. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes. You can go ahead and, we can hear you now.
Okay. The button kept flying off my phone. Um, just a couple of questions in regards to, you know, talked about Red Cross and wildfires. Um, when we went to level two, of course, you know, I'm packing a go-bag, um, and trying to figure out where we would go. I was really surprised that as I called around, there was only one place to go if you had a tent. And that was, I think the Elks in Milwaukee. They said, well, you know, if you have a tent, you can just stay in the shelter. Well, no, we, we have a tent. Yeah, I was surprised that it was so set up for campers and motorhomes. You had to have that. A tent wasn't accessible. And, you know, a lot of us aren't rich enough to have a motorhome or a camper. Or, you know, we have other priorities for our funds. But, you know, I just wanted to throw it out there that, you know, we could have another issue at any time. It would be nice if people who just had a tent had a place to go.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'd like to actually come out. One of the problems, of course, is that the zone two areas were where the campgrounds are. Uh, we don't have campgrounds in our cities or uh, in most of the urban area. So when the, when it went to zone two, that was where all our campgrounds were. So short of building campgrounds in our cities and stuff, we really didn't have that option.
No, I wasn't thinking of campgrounds. I mean, I'm less than three miles from Barton Park. Um, I wasn't thinking campground because they were all going to, to level three. Um, but I'm talking about the churches and all the places the Red Cross set up across Clackamas County as far in as, oh, down by 205.
Sure.
Yep.
Those emergency setups, it would be really, I think, beneficial for the people who, you know, I have a tent, our backup plan, you know, because my husband had to work and I was getting the go-bag ready. We were just going to go camp up on the mountain.
Commissioner Humbirdston had his hand up.
There was only one place to go.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to share with the, with the caller that, um, the Elks Lodge in Milwaukee had tent camping, um, for people and they had, um, uh, restroom facilities, food, et cetera. Um, I know communications were not perfect, so I'll address that upfront. Uh, but, um, that is a place where people, uh, could, could have gone and people did go. I actually visited that. So, um,
Right. That was the only one though. That was the only one.
Yeah. So, so one of the things we want to be able to do in our after-action analysis is get a list of places such as that, so that if this does happen again, people will have, we will be able to get the information out to people as to where they can go.
Yep. That would be nice. I mean, I did a lot of calling, but I haven't, you know, nothing else to do. But it, you know, everybody just kept telling me, Good Shepherd has that, you know, big, huge expansive land, piece of land. Nope, we can't take a tent.
All right. Well, we are, we are going to do a recap, uh, in the future of, uh, wildfire response and that certainly, and we're going to include the public and we'd love to hear from you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I saw Les Poole's hand up, but it looks like it went, nope, went back up. Let me go ahead and bring him on over. Les, go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hey, again, Les Poole from Gladstone. A couple of things is the, obviously the election was held and we, we haven't had violence or uh, incidents in Clackamas. All concerned about some of the lunacy that's gone on. I would encourage the board and all commissioner individuals, uh, speak about the rioting. Um, this has gone on for months or a period. And, uh, it's totally acceptable. Uh, other thing I wanted to mention is there was a message on the from the citizens and, um, those, uh, extreme spending habits have caught up with them. And I, I support some of the pride of we were sun mentioned. But I think in the end, it's very clear the original metro several years ago to
Really? Les, excuse me for breaking in, but we're getting about every fourth or fifth word. Are you still there?
Sounds like we might have lost Les.
Okay. Sorry, Les. If you can hear. I'm going to hang up, sorry. Okay, that's okay, Les, thanks for calling. All right, anything, anything else?
I don't see any other hands and there's no emails.
All right, Gary, what's up next?
Uh, next is my update. And in the, in the interest of time, I will pass up my update and just thank the staff for their continued good work all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're on to county commu, uh, Commissioner Communications and Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Wow, what a day, huh? We, we've been meeting for two hour, three hour, was it three hours? Two hours and 39 minutes. So I, um, I'm going to save my comments for next week. I do want to, um, discuss what we're doing in our community for children. And with the looking like failure of the children's safety levy, I'm hoping to have some time this week with Commissioner Schrader so we can do some debriefing and strategy and look at next steps. And hopefully for next week on Commissioner's presentation, I will have more to share. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Paul? Paul, your mic. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. Yeah, just want to, uh, I, I'll keep my comments short due to the, uh, the length of the meeting. Um, just want to just acknowledge, um, somewhat saddened by the fact that the children's levy did not pass. Uh, and, um, also kind of a reality check to some degree that knowing that, um, what I think what drives a lot of people sometimes are their personal finances and that people may not be in the best, um, financial position, um, as regards, uh, you know, to maybe all perhaps affording it. I think that people generally are very passionate about children and truly believe in the safety issues and all the aspects of what we are trying to do. Um, but, um, you know, there's, we also had a other, another money measure that failed as well. The metro measure failed. So, um, uh, it's maybe just indicative of the times. Um, and, uh, I'll just, just be short there and hopefully we'll have a full count here pretty soon. I'm not sure if anything will really change there. Um, um, uh, but, uh, I'll just stop there and just wish everyone a safe weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Martha?
Microphone?
I have a few things, but I'm just gonna, I'll save some for next week as well. But I just did want to give a shout out to Wes's Water and Environment Services for their work on Measure three dash five six two. That was a measure that passed by 72% of the vote. It was a local measure for Oregon City. But I was involved with Wes as they were doing their work to make that happen. We basically met with the tribes. Um, we used an approach of community building. And, and the reason we, um, we did that, uh, was so we could really get people out to, uh, Wes for tours, for looking at the place. Uh, we went out with the Grand Ron, uh, specifically because this was an easement to install a last portion of an out, outfall pipeline underneath John Storm Park in Oregon City. And it was essential because the other outfalls are at capacity and this is so important for clean water. But, um, it was beautifully done. Um, they really rallied the entire community behind it because it was, we were a little, we were getting a little nervous because you're underneath kind of one of the, the bigger parks and also going, um, underneath land that actually, uh, was, which was of historical significance to the Grand Ron Tribe. So it was handled beautifully and, um, I'd like to debrief with that because I think the framework they used in order to make this happen is the framework that works in this county to move things ahead. So I do, I do feel very sad, I'll be honest, I feel sad about the children's levy, but I hope that we can, um, uh, revisit those issues and maybe even broader this, broaden the size and scope to include things like childcare and after-school programs as well. But I think that's going to take, um, a different way of looking how we message. And I also think it's going to take, um, probably, um, more time in order to make sure things are, are pulled together and baked. Um, but anyway, um, I do want to congratulate Wes and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I had a report on the local public safety coordinating commission, um, meeting this week, but I will save that for next week. Uh, I want to echo Commissioner Savis's remarks with respect to both the children's levy as well as the transportation, um, request from Metro. Um, there's no question in my mind, the needs are there, but there's also no question in my mind that this is not the time, economically speaking, for that to have occurred. There are economically uncertain times for way too many people at this point in time. Um, and when we make an ask of the public for funds, we need to take that into consideration. Um, because, uh, kitchen table issues are crucial to people. And I think Martha's comments with respect to the coalition building are absolutely right on the money. Uh, more work has to be done in that department. So you have to put those two things together if you're going to have a successful request for funds from the public. And I will leave my remarks there.
All right. Uh, thank you. And finally, I'd just like to, uh, right now, Ken, congratulations on winning reelection. I know there are still votes to be counted, but it's rare to change. And, uh, you know, I, I also, Wes, for, uh, passing their, uh, election, or whatever you call that pipe. And, um, uh, I look forward to, uh, to the discussion on, uh, November 25th on the, uh, STRs. I think that setting the price of STRs will be decided by you. It could be zero, it could be, it's all about enforcement. How much enforcement do you want? That's what the folks told us. And, um, so a good discussion and thanks for the input from the citizens and have a great weekend. Oh, wait, one more thing. Uh, I will be unable to attend the union president's meeting today. And while Ken would love to go, he thinks it might be tight. So two of you can go. If you guys want to talk amongst one another and decide who can go, that'd be great. I have an N-RAC meeting, my last one, and then Martha will be taking it over. And Paul, we'll see you at C4 tonight.
All right, and I have a, what, what time is the, um, the meeting for the, um?
Union presidents?
Union presidents, yeah.
Four.
Four.
All right. Thank you. We are adjourned.